Joe Payer
Here
Jen Brink Larry Clontz
Here
Jimmy Rowley
Here
Jason Roach Charlie Thacker Mr. Chairman, we have four members present in the Constitution of the
I think the claim is a proof of being changed, made for our So that Now, six
That's it
All right You're close Take down the number four Start Down to seven Certain And now Make up the
So it's not an altar, right?
Yeah The door was made with the You're breaking the Right there About the Our car is black Something called road Turn off one of them First road to the left And I came by and looked at it To that Done the road song Around that area I didn't want to look at it I get dropped at the end of that road And If there's a broadside They say Back into Blue I could see a broadside But I did see Three or four vehicles The block was forty-five That's Our county But anyway, I have I'll let you Do it again I know all I know Think If they got through one And According to the Of course, it's big enough They were They were I think
Right, this was a suit broadside Mr. Smith gained access here Flataway on Flatways Nineteen ninety-nine Approximately nineteen-sixties Supposedly there was a Garage built On that I saw one That's a leader But basically It's just saving about a half The rightaway goes back as a flat First half is open Services and facilities Almost that It goes to a dead end And that's the part of the Smith owns behind there She brought a suit And changed it for here And buckets again A chance to prove that it was a county rightaway And that they were to Remove their instructions from that body And this is nothing that makes us That one was appealed To the Court of Appeals They Vacated and remanded back To the Court Of Hawkins County What they Basic reason was, they said that Two interested and necessary parties are not present As parties in the original suit I will say, Mr. Beatingback then did testify in the suit On behalf of the county I guess it was a witness For For the parties But Hawkins County was their name as a party to the suit So the Court of Appeals Returned it to Court down here To include Hawkins County And to include the Clemensers If you can visualize if This strip of light of rightaway going back to the property Is not a county rightaway Because the county doesn't own the county of rightaway And that Hawkins block back there Belongs to the heirs of Clemens, which are the ones that built the subdivision back in the So at this point, Mr. East Has highly sued Beating And amended suit, naming the county as a party Reading from the Court of Appeals decision And they based it On based on actual testimony of Tim Scott And also a resolution That was passed by the County Commission back in nineteen fifty-nine And says We resolve that the County Court of Hawkins County, Tennessee, As recommended by the County Superintendent of Highways, All streets and roads which have been here before laid out And dedicated to public use Within duly-planted subdivisions Located in set county Shall be taken over by the County Superintendent of Highways To maintain his public roads and streets As ecologically As the highway superintendent Same as the working And make it some set roads and streets So At so fifty-nine, did county This was the Westmore County Committee Built County Road Commissions County Court Presses Stated that all those roads And this is a flataway on a subdivision By the So when they shift it back, we're asking Hawkins County Again, for For anything Or the running Is that The effect of the trial court judge was the county, whether it wanted to be Or not As now they confirm as the owner of Hydrane County, of course, may not be interested in the desire ownership of Hydrane Even assuming that the county has contained the outcome of dislegation Of its ownership of Hydrane Its interests have Could not have Could have been adversely affected And they never had a chance to Supply their position So that's what I'm looking for Is that I have to answer the complaint And either agree that we Accept The court's decision that Hydrane is a county road the entire way Or if you have some other Issue with the Rightaway is not really a county road What steps have been taken, if any, in the past I don't know where have any To vacate that way I'm looking for directions as how they respond to the amended complaint filed by Attorney
That That was about thirty foot broadside
Yes, on the flat, it's thirty foot Rightaway front and back One of the flats shows a forty at the end and a thirty at the front Surveyor, I think, proved that obvious The flat is thirty feet
And there's thirty How do we go back to the property right?
I think it does, yes So I've had Samples of it Like it This shows you how the rightaway runs and it goes up to the Smith property
Yeah, that That is the power On every Property And Here's our We can Yes, we did Now, can Or not Or not To the There are all of those Or that rightaway Both of them To our property Or Those You got people And all that
Yes, and I'm not sure It may or may not affect the This Rightway Use the rightaway If the county has never taken any procedures up to this point Could Come through the machinery of the Broker Committee Of Commissioner Rains to vacate And then the County Commission Rains not Will be in county road Now, probably there's all the other suit But it's just going to say Some kind of best interest That's for you guys Decided to Make The decision Any way, this would be just more important than most options Right Agree with the Court's conclusion that County has a valid rightaway And therefore They have the right to open that Which is Where you decide it's not a valid rightaway The county can just chop off that way And put it down there Which means that Maybe still be a litigation Valid Action
Is that the rightaway to that property?
It is, yes There's some Discussion I heard that says that Originally amended With the rightaway At this point, I understand that That's the only convenient rightaway That's the only way to actually apply To the suit
Are any of your problems Don't worry about That don't look True To The County County And They would Not start And don't just But that don't Right Or that don't like a Maybe Look Or that That And
Yes If they have The Going to give access first to the Also Possession And And say that Well
I can't probably If you land Or The If County And Or
It's right now About to change it for here There's lots of Second Rightaway In fact, the This is third rule Unless the Court here would find Additional evidence Change third Because originally The court here had said it was a valid rightaway So unless the court hears for the Additional evidence And that's the purpose of the remand In those language They It's important, Charlie, to stay with the Court of Appeals We've been here It's complicated Because No plan Basically, the game is an ownership If the county John is a homeowner Piece of land Which is a rightaway Or also So Just have any faith Try to Taste Turn around For property Says The purpose of the remand is to offer a trial The little meeting in the trial Rather than for the purpose to join the house of third parties And give them The opportunity to present new evidence That's been necessary by the trial That's not
So If broadside Or They They'll But I think Having About So But In the And But it involves It will be My And there's Robber Or People That Three hundred Sixty-four Here Robber Go through that
Yeah, I guess We need to Please Out The Change Mission
No, we know Yeah Yes I had a time To say That Or Yeah Yeah Why They They have They They're that Safe They have Right in their property
And that would be double road And we have to Remember I wish to answer I found answers to the Complaint Against the Court of Appeals And we'll Have the objections When I'm still At the same outcome That'll then Be questioned if that's appeal or not This can be a little For But You know, it's like That's low enough Exactly
Well, we're here
It's It seems, based upon the evidence I've seen And the testimony Stuff Is that It was a property And it made it rightaway Doesn't have any Court Resolution Excepting And then The It's been sixty years It's that change And vacated Just the Relaunching Either way It's not Potentially Aside Except for Of course Conclusion that Hydrane is a Power
The one They don't They don't We don't Know They never really have any view But We have Here And But that Can't They should We
It could fall either way It's a difficult Bring the Conclusion of the court Because he's not Or we If we have the Evidence Wish To Try to support The I was saying Simply find Which is making the second Conclusion based on the Presenting In the trial It's a fairly Rough research Commission Which Mr. Bean testified To Scott Those There were two Being Councillors Chair
I have one question Your statue Stuck County road Not my It's twenty years It goes back I don't know where that stands If there is That would be Should Her Her head Defended Like Eight months And I think it changed I don't Get A lot Of Right It's about the books They It's been a lot Of
Yeah, like I'm looking to see if that If there's a place In this situation That Case Out The front Of the trial That Picture Station Part Of this That
You already said Can't have a rightaway Somebody cannot have a rightaway over a property Unless it's a county road That's what I'm hearing
No, I'm saying the county The county has Rightaway over the property They If If the county then Has the obligation If that's accepted Which The resolution Was accepted To maintain that rightaway He's looking For For All
And if you Did that All it's going to do Don't That Don't Think Or Don't want to But Maybe That Click On They They Well, that That See It is always Letting That But No one helps I guess If You If I need Change Okay So Same You know Same Three Steps There At the twenty Year Right And that Is
It would be If The Resolution They Have That Find us The And The Talk About
Well, I mean I've Had Since The Twenty-five Year I've played I don't like I don't Love Making
I just Understand What I was responding to I can't That's not a fast Inside We were served Three million Five There you go I'd like Thank you I do that I need a resolution In the sense of Do you want me to Compared with The Million Seconds If there's a statue That's And Back Days Twenty-eight
Yeah, I'm talking about And I have I don't like that A lot Of
A lot of my Great And we I'm asking Opposing attorney Permission
And All right
Okay I'll I'll Really Statute
I'm sorry Wait a second You're watching Okay
We have But
Well, you Were just saying
I don't know Where
Okay, no, 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 no I just thought that At least My Okay
You're About
Okay
No money at all That be More
No No, I'm just thought At least That
What could Such Come On The Fight Right Of County Say More for me I guess But I'd like to see the After Come About Same I I'm sure I'll be the one that makes that decision Based upon that section And maybe something I need Through The Tell you What Statute says Very strange They have two good attorneys And Plus An expert If there was a statue out there That If they were cut The thing That It's possible Just So I don't know much I appreciate Our Opportunity But I Contingency I'm sure I'll be the one that makes that decision Listen And I'll come back to What I think The Like Creation
Sounds like the Harriers Is going to hope They That somebody built the road And next Seven Nine
Thank you Yeah, right But
They No I Like So this road is paved Up so far that it stops And from there The It's not even gravel Or Anything That Makes Of this Made Is very Little Eighty-four Five It's Next Access Is Right Yeah, it's not Wrong Those don't Do They 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 Trade To Have And Then I think Why You
I don't know This Pretty This is We're Coming back This is Like I said Vehicles And it goes back to
And you say it's not right here?
Uh, someplace along Though Whenever this Drive This last This is where you can see that But You can't see This is where the Horse Trail On
Okay It's It's You see All Something They Have You There
Looking at This Thing Wasn't But also Need So If Ever Thought He said By The Commission That For Something You're Good Mr. Jones And
We Have Turned Okay, you drive You Do I count Four Forty Uh, let me We don't care If You When They And Some Should Be You know When They About Four Mile Just Up To Just A Big You know That Yeah We go Probably Ten Day But We go Ten Day Or They say Not Sixteen Been And All The That They So You You If They That's all It's You They See What And he said But I knew nothing Three year ago We Close Fourth They Push Some Some Close That The All Don't Yet About Three You Our Road Okay About And We Turn Off Three Six Turn Off Well Said Mark That He That I Everybody Still Locked Well I got Over In That And And What They Actually Back Up And Back Back Up Way Spray That She Was I didn't see Spray And But I did Say In That Town They Well One They had two They Close And We Don't So But It We Take Off Of Very Long That Right I'm Doing That Don't What But Went In Last And Say The Pipe Went Down And What I To Get About About Ten Foot So So Pipe Would sit Down The Rock It's Solid Rock But I Don't See Problem You Got Right Off And Back Down You Back And Also Said Does That You You Have They You Cover Close I Like State Well Well They Got Two And Or Still He Was And If They Back Right You Go On The Certain Other I What That We Can Do Without Taking Five Out Of Which We Straight Drop Off Right Now And They Run It's In I Think They If They Or Shift Now Real Real Before We Did Anything All The Time In Before we did anything, all the, all the time in there was about, like, five foot from me to the path. And I even wanted to move the road. The road will be made. Made in four lines. And it's stayed perfect. When it's been available, it's like, great, um, they're, uh, this town. And they got raised higher, just probably, uh, eighteen foot five, then we. And they go proper, uh, leverage period. That's working. In the day, uh, I don't see a problem, but I like the problem. I think one, uh, uh, trying. Even less now, uh. I'm always. I'm, if you all, uh, uh. You think. You didn't believe? Through permission, excuse myself. Then, uh, I've got a question. Probably, uh. Sit right there. I had a car, uh, Mr. Kyle Johnson. He's got grandson, you know, though. Long explain, ice bridge. County side. Going to put it in my house or something. Anyway, it's sick. He's wanting to know if he can attach a sewer line to the bridge, which was really. In order to run the sewer from that property to Sorenful Sewer Station. I told him anywhere I'd ever worked before, you could not attach stuff to the. A private citizen couldn't attach stuff to, to that public, you know, property. I guess that would be y'all's choice. I told him I'd write in forty, but I didn't say that they didn't know. I don't think he might have a problem with, with the sewer lining. They were getting on. The county owns the bridge. Yeah. That's state social information. So, uh, county commission, we ended up building that bridge. I have, uh, like, uh, that. But they added that to that bridge. Cross bridge, turn it into east. And that's great, yeah. That's really, yeah, they'll have to bridge. I don't figure, uh, they, they, my mom. They would leave. And, uh, things like. But they add that to the bridge, cross bridge, turn it into east. That's great, yeah. That's, that's what we had. Well, you're talking to someone, uh, got permission from me. But I heard about that, that information from you. To attach to where they. I'll tell you my brain before y'all. Let you know what, what the decision, which we did have. Or, uh, without any problem. He's now the Sorenful Sewer Station, so it's probably a four curve. Yeah, that, uh, and that is off, uh, maybe, uh, moving on, maybe, uh, why? Actually, we did it. Hey. They put it down right there. It's about, uh, he was calling contact, you typically, uh, see how much the caution was. But he started, he stopped, he said, I got it, man. He wanted to know if, if, if he was ready. Or he would run it quick, uh. Let's go. Uh, I think we are. This one is unraveling. They want, you can say unraveling, but. We have a thing, that's in the scene. Right. They just, we already got a clear to the scene. As far as I can take. Well, he would be gone. At the ocean, well, I would have been at the ocean, kind of, uh, her. And then, uh, in one thing. And I hope he stays near three blocks out. I wouldn't see the lane himself. He must be on the ground, uh, same as saying, you know. And the layer. Uh, this one, uh, he was, uh, 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 uh. But I still, uh, 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 uh. I think we're, uh, 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 uh. Uh, I'm telling you, it's, uh, 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 uh. I think, I think he might say. President's form, people feature. Like. There's still five minutes. Uh, this is, uh, uh, uh. Well, we, we're, uh, we like, uh, being, we all, uh, uh, uh. And then, uh, we should. Re. That, that would be, uh, uh.
We have a problem like that. The doors gap, it's been up years ago now. Up in Green County. Uh, there's a sewer system from those gap runs to Mossheim. And it takes, right, going towards Mossheim. It's on Ryan South Road. It's off the main highway. And that was, Mossheim was trying to buy our section out. And they was wanting to go across this bridge. Get over to the new, uh, over the main highway. The county, Green County built this bridge, this new bridge. But they deeded it back to the landlord. The landlord said, no, you're not going to hang, uh, sewer line on my bridge. So, we got involved with the lawyer, with the lawyer. And the lawyer said, well, doors gap, uh, we, we had to cede on that bridge. And they were hanging sewer line on it. But I mean, this, this was going to serve a lot of people, I mean, but not this one, that bridge. But that's what happened there. But we never could understand how Green County built a new bridge. And ended up deeding back to the landlord. But that road's closed. They said, the bridge is still there, but the road's closed.
Anybody else have any, any, uh, right? I just, uh, my eyes, uh. Got to hook out there, your friends, the guardrail or the signpost, or anything, rather. Got to hook to it. Stay down. It's rough. But that's, uh, it's, uh, uh, uh. No, no. All right. I was like, Charlie said, no. You're going, oh, mate.
Was there anybody else could hook on to that line?
I don't know. There's, there's no matter. You tell the contractor, put in, uh, send a line.
I mean, like, could somebody come by later? And use it, or would they have to hang their own?
Right.
We said that the engineering studies involved. We have to get back to the county engineer, make sure the county, uh, uh, study. Uh, which, we made things up. You can cause. Who's going to maintain the law against the whole, uh, 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 whatever. Because it's really a, it's a very complicated situation, so. Not something you can decide.
Well, we did this, you know. You know. One day I'll come sure to say, well, I think that's. I saw where. They were turned, what was it, uh? Just like, uh, uh, uh. Now, basically, now, those, uh, 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 uh. It's like give and have. I saw that blue, uh, 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 uh. That's the end of the bridge. Only the, uh, they, uh, you want to let us do, uh, they made that road. But they didn't let the bridge. But then you go out there on, uh, 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 uh. And they will take you into the center. And. It's got to be so far away from the bridge, uh, 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 uh. Yes. And then, uh, uh.
It's teed in.
There, uh, yeah. You know. Yes. I'm not going to tell you what I don't say. I'll give you a, uh. I'm not going to buy it, uh, 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 uh. I don't know where you're smashing, uh, uh, uh. That's. Well, I, 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 uh, uh, uh. Well. It's not like the mission to, uh, uh. I'll say. Why is the name very much? Maybe. Oh, great. Is it just, uh? Uh, long, long, uh, 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 uh. In that area. The name. I'm just gonna say, uh, uh, uh. Okay. Great. Yeah. Yes. All right, well, uh, uh, uh. So, uh, uh. So, you're, uh, uh. Okay, thanks again. Appreciate it, uh. Thank you. Bye for now. See you next week. Okay. Uh, it's, uh, it's a video, uh. There's a lot of, uh, 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 uh. They, uh, uh. Uh, uh. One thing, uh, uh, uh. And I'll pay you, uh, uh. He said, those things, uh, uh, uh. Uh, 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 uh. On here. Uh, 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 uh. Uh, 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 uh. Uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh. That's not a legal sign, uh, uh, uh. I agree. I mean, it's almost like, uh, 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 twenty-five years. You put up a plan, say, uh, uh, uh. It's almost like, uh, 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 uh. You have to respond to it. I mean, it gave any thought. But anyway, I love this little, uh, uh. I'm gonna thank her after, uh, uh, uh. I can place an autistic child, uh, 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 their personal work. If they won't silence, now they play, uh, 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 they just don't. The children play in entrance, anything in the big directions. With, with, uh. But I mean, like, uh, vehicle, uh, 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 uh. And especially things, uh, 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 uh. Uh, uh, uh. Uh. You leave, uh, 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 uh. You know, uh, 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 uh. Uh, she goes, uh, 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 uh. Yeah, brother, uh. She, uh, 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 uh. I have, uh, 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 uh. Most of them's there. I guess it's a, uh, connecting, uh, 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 uh. Uh, 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 uh. Standing there. Forty, forty-five. Most of them's. Uh, uh. Uh, sad place, uh. Uh, yeah. I'm part of that. Before you get, uh, uh. Turn up, uh, we get, uh, big, uh, big bed, uh, uh, uh. Turn under, uh, uh, uh. I guess all would be a little bit of a tinge, but, uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh. And, uh, uh. They, they did a little bit of backboard, uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh. You, uh, uh, uh. They got that, uh, uh. Thank you. Here, uh. I'm afraid you're up, uh, uh. That's how they go through, uh, uh. And the car, uh. Which is about three hundred feet. From, uh, uh. And, uh, 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 uh. Uh, 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 uh. Uh, uh. They like, uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh. Uh. Uh, uh. Thank you. You know, uh, uh. You, uh, 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 uh. 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 We, uh, we, uh, uh, uh. We, uh, uh. We do it. Uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh. Uh, uh, uh. Do it. Uh, uh, uh. You know, what's, uh, 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 uh. I, uh, thirty-five cents, uh, uh. About two hundred dollars per second. Still costs about four hundred dollars plus, 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 uh, which are thirty-five dollars. If you're looking at five hundred bucks, six. But, uh, go for it. Yeah, I believe you. So, uh. We were talking earlier, uh, uh. You know, there, there may be other people in that area who want to stay in that bridge, something else. And, you know, I don't mind if they dig this one or whatever, but for, for future. Bridges and naming and things like that. I wonder if we should, in the rest of the meeting. Uh, say that we are getting ready to name X, Y, Z bridge, uh, after a veteran, whatever. And, and put a public notice in the paper that, you know, says, if anybody has any. Any additional suggestions or anything like that to, to come forward, because. I think people that live in, in a certain area around the bridge or, or, or whatever. Don't really know it's happening until it's done. And, you know, there may be, maybe we should start some sort of application process. Uh, this, uh, I, I don't know if y'all, uh, 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 but. I don't think so, uh, uh. Yeah. I can't, uh, 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 uh. But. Uh, uh, uh. But, uh, uh. We can, uh, 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 uh. I appreciate it, uh. Yeah.